Good evening. Welcome to the January 12th Board of County Commissioners meeting. Current time is 6:01. If you'll please join us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing, Heavenly Father. We come with gratitude this evening for those in service. For those in our military and their families, for our first responders and healthcare workers, for our essential employees, for our faith in non-for-profit communities. They remind us of a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. who said, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love." We are indeed grateful for those in service to our country, to our state, and to our county. We ask for your blessings on those who are putting others first, and we pray for your blessings of safety and love be upon them and their families. And for this meeting and for those in service here tonight, we ask that our actions and our words reflect the best that is in each of us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. For those of you here earlier today, it's been a long day. We appreciate your patience in working with us. First item of business will be the public comment, except for any item that is a public hearing. You'll have an opportunity to speak at that time if you're here for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Board of County Commissioners? Public comment. Good evening. Welcome back.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Jarrett Romanello. I'm a proud resident of St. Lucie County, and I want to update the board this evening on some of the latest news from the Creekside Community Development District. First, I'd like to recognize Deputy Tim Harless, a 24-year veteran of the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office. On January 8th, it was 43 degrees in Fort Pierce when Deputy Harless saw Lloyd Matthews, a 70-year-old disabled homeless man, under the Turnplike Overpass at Okeechobee Road. After stopping to check on Mr. Matthews, Deputy Harless gave him his personal yellow jacket to wear and to stay warm. Mr. Matthews said in the two years that he's been homeless, this was the first time anyone ever stopped and offered him their jacket when he was cold. I thank Deputy Harless for his kind service, offer Mr. Matthews my support, and congratulate the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office for having such selfless-serving deputies. This weekend, I look forward to the Southern Things for Little Wings Car Show at the St. Lucie County Fairgrounds. Established as a nonprofit organization in 2019, the organization supports families affected by congenial diaphragmatic hernias. Proceeds from this weekend's event will support CDH Medical Research and the Hockbook Meyer Scholarship awarded to St. Lucie County 4-H students. I support the recommendation to waive the open space rental fee for this organization because of their contribution to CDH Medical Research, their commitment to promoting 4-H in this county, and in remembrance of Hockbook Meyer, who passed away only three weeks after he was born in 2016. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak this evening to you, and I'd like to thank you for everything you do for our county. And to find out more about Creekside, please visit our communitynews@creeksidepost.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And as you're walking back, I want to thank you for going through the process. We do sometimes waive fees for things that benefit the entire community, and this is what you're doing in helping a number of children, and we appreciate that. So, thank you for going through the process. We are still under public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board? All right, thank you. And a different Mr. Matthews, I'd like to point out that Ed Matthews is here, Director of Parks and Recreation, who is going to be retiring soon. We are saddened for that, but we will certainly wish you well in your retirement. And when you're going to give me lessons for how to golf, let me know, because...
You could use them.
Thank you.
Wait a second, I've seen you golf.
All right, all right. Well, again, thank you, Mr. Matthews. I just wanted to recognize you because you're great for the St. Lucie County. You worked us through all the issues with rebuilding Clover, what is now Clover Field, and the Mets agreements, and so that was an incredible amount of work, and what you've been able to do for the department has been incredible. So, we're very grateful. All right.
I'm gonna clap.
I didn't know I was going to embarrass you, but I thought I could. All right. Next item is the approval. We have several items of approval for minutes. We can take them individually or can take them all at once. If there are no changes, additions, or retractions, or anything taken away, we can accept them all at one motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitchell, a second by Townsend. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I know I was supposed to do the roll call. Sorry, Madam Clerk. All right, next item is proclamations for approval, but before we get started, I'd like to have our IT staff queue up a video. We have a video that will come into play with the proclamation that will be coming up next. I think we need some volume.
Today, we can see being a divided people is just not working. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "We must all learn to live together as brothers and sisters, or perish together as fools." God gave us two eyes to see, two ears to listen, one mouth to speak. It's clearly time to listen and observe more and speak less.
When I think about Dr. King, I remember that he spoke against hate and bitterness and violence. He spoke for love and forgiveness. He saw the value in each person regardless of their standing in society or the color of their skin. He saw that everybody can be great because anybody can serve. As time has moved on, it seems like his words have more relevance than ever from the 1960s. And so, when we celebrate his birthday, what I will be doing is remembering his words and trying to put them into my everyday life. And I remember my favorite quote of his, which is, "We must learn to accept finite disappointment, but we must never lose our infinite hope." Happy Martin Luther King Day.
You know, for me, celebrating MLK Day or the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Day has been one of the highlights of being a part of this community and being a part of any particular community. I believe his message still resonates today. It's about unity. It's about working together. It's about collaboration. Regardless of what background you're from, it's all about equality, equity amongst all. So, I celebrate his day. As a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King became a member in 1952. I became a member in 1992. So, that 40-year difference right there, and I still believe in all the things that he has said in "I Have a Dream" speech. I believe in equality. I believe in giving everybody an opportunity. I believe in working together as a community. I believe that this community in St. Lucie County is well-positioned, well-prepared to be united as one community. So, I celebrate MLK Day, and I believe and still believe in all the mission and the dreams that came from the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
The reason why I feel Martin Luther King Day is so important is because it's a day of remembrance. It's a day of remembrance about the many struggles that we've had here in America. It's a day of remembrance about the courage that we've exemplified here in America. And it's a day about how we've come together as a nation, as a community, and how we've put that strength and courage together to bring our nation together and to make it a better place to live. It represents the many sacrifices that has taken place, and it's the remembrance of a man who put everything on the line, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., to bring a better tomorrow for everyone. So, Martin Luther King Day is definitely a day for everyone. It is, to me, the American dream. It speaks to, you can come from, I'd like to say, the pit to the palace. You can live your dream here in America. You can be the dream here in America. And it's just so powerful, and that's why we should just continue to be the change, to fight for the dream, to bring unity to our nation that so badly needs it right now. Most of all, we have to remember that we are better together. Thank you.
Today and every day, we continue to pursue the dream, that dream of unity and inclusion. And we must not forget that diversity is one of our greatest gifts, and we must embrace it. Let's be part of the change. Seamos parte del cambio.
Excellent. Very good. All right, that's a good cue for the resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
A resolution proclaiming Monday, January 18th, 2021, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. 100 years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, the great Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. took to the steps of the Lincoln Memorial and shared his vision of an American lifted from the quick sands of racial injustice to the solid rock of brotherhood. His extraordinary message that momentous day in August of 1963 stirred to action Americans of every race and creed, and it continues to reverberate in the hearts and minds of patriotic citizens across our great land. Today, as we pause to mark the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., we recommit ourselves to the advancement of equality and justice for all Americans and to the full realization of his worthy dream. We have made great strides, but we acknowledge that more work must be done, for in the words of Dr. King, "Justice to roll down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. United as one American family, we will not rest and we will not be satisfied until the promise of this great nation is accessible to each American and each new generation." More than half a century after Dr. King's march on Washington for jobs and freedom, our nation is mindful of its past, and we look forward to the future with unwavering optimism, inspired by the legacy of Dr. King and informed by his wisdom and vision. May the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the efforts we have made to fully effectuate his dream remind us that faith and love unite us together as one great American family. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, this board does hereby proclaim Monday, January 18th, 2021, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in St. Lucie County, Florida. This board also encourages all residents to recommit themselves to Dr. King's dream by engaging in acts of service to others and to their community, passed and duly adopted this 12th day of January 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Hutchinson, second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This evening, we have Deanne Johnson. Doctor, phone up. Alfonso, you want to come in?
Doctor Perry.
We're going to let you have a conversation, too, to the public and talk about what's happening this year. You guys want to say something?
Good evening. To the Commissioners and all that are present here. Good evening, and I want to say, on behalf of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Committee here in St. Lucie County, we would like to thank you for this recognition. We are honored. And due to COVID-19, I'm sure there will be more people here to support it, but again, we thank you. As we continue to strive to be one people, one nation, one dream, we're just so grateful that we still have an opportunity to carry out our activities. And we still have a couple of activities left. On Friday evening, we have the Ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. They will have, we, will have a virtual Kahoot Trivial with the kids. It will be on Facebook Live, on the Fort Pierce Zetas page, as well as a Zoom link. I don't have that link. And on Saturday morning, the Ladies of Sigma Gamma Ros sorority Incorporated, they will carry on with the virtual breakfast. And we will be at home having breakfast, but it will be on Zoom. And their speaker this year is the newly-elected Curtis Johnson from the City Commission now. And at 1:00 PM, the Men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, they will have the Reef Land Ceremony, and it is virtual as well. Again, as we continue to work together in partnership here in St. Lucie County, we would like to say thank you, and we are grateful. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Perry, did you want to say anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Commissioner, Chair, Commissioners, on behalf of the Brothers of the Excellent, Eta, Kappa, Lambda, Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, we are proud to be able to receive this proclamation for you. As was mentioned earlier, Dr. King became a member of our August Brotherhood in 1952. And just like Dr. King, we too strive to continue to uplift our communities and provide the same type of service so that we can benefit the community, benefit children, benefit youth, all mankind, so that we all will be able to make his dream a reality one day. So, again, on behalf of my wonderful brothers, two of them are with me today, Brother Jefferson and Brother Curry in the back, thank you again for this recognition, and we appreciate you and your support of all of our efforts as well. Have a great evening.
Great. Thank you very, very much. All right. All right, next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there any item that a Commissioner would like to pull for separate vote or discussion? Hearing, none?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Townsend, second by Bart. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, moving on to public hearings. First item is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Ordinance amending membership to add the County Commissioner. Mr. McIntyre, you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item does relate to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. It is a public hearing. If adopted, the ordinance would amend the membership to add a County Commissioner. The reason we're doing this is in 2020, the Florida Legislature amended the state law to require the addition of a County Commissioner to this body effective October 1st. The attached ordinance would provide for this. Staff recommends approval.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Townsend, second by Mitchell. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Next item will be a Planning and Development Services item. Christopher's coming forward. This is a Prima Vista rezone, change in zoning from commercial office zoning district to commercial neighborhood. Good evening, Christopher. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Zdowski and members of the board. For the record, my name's Chris McCrain, associate planner with the Planning and Development Services Department, and tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item 9B1. Rezone petition presented by Andrew Russo. In accordance with public notice requirements outlined in Section 110003 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on December 23rd, 2020. Notices were mailed to 52 surrounding property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, and a sign was placed on the property. At this time, the Planning and Development Services Department hasn't received any responses back from any of those property owners. The combined 0.53-acre parcels are located on the southwest corner of Oroso Boulevard and Prima Vista Boulevard. The future land use designation is commercial, which is intended to accommodate all commercial zoning districts as identified under the St. Lucie County Land Development Code. Office and general retail uses are considered the principal uses within the commercial future land use. The proposed rezoning to the commercial neighborhood zoning district is consistent with the commercial future land use designation as per Comprehensive Plan Table 1-3, Land Use and Designation Zoning Compatibility Chart. On March 27th, 1990, the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners approved Resolution 90-79, granting a change in zoning from the residential 4, single-family zoning district to the commercial office zoning district. The proposed zoning petition will conform to the minimum lots, lot size, in accordance with the Land Development Code, Section 70401, for the commercial neighborhood zoning district. The commercial neighborhood zoning district allows for limited trade and service activities to serve the surrounding neighborhoods. The above table provides a few examples of the permitted uses allowed within the commercial neighborhood zoning district. Some of the uses include beauty and barber shops, real estate offices, household appliances, office goods. All future uses will be reviewed by the St. Lucie County Development Review Committee for compatibility with the surrounding uses. This table provides some examples of the conditional uses that would be permissible within the commercial neighborhood zoning district, such as a small postal shop, daycare, gasoline services. Some of the eligible conditional uses may not be appropriate due to the land size and site access, as well as the proximity to the surrounding single-family dwellings. And all future uses will be reviewed by the Development Review Committee for compatibility. The petition does conform to the standards of review set forth in Land Development Code, Section 110603, and is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan objectives, goals, and policies. On November 19th, 2020, the petition was presented before the St. Lucie County Planning and Zoning Commission, who voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And staff is recommending the Board of County Commissioners approve this rezoning. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant's agent representative is here, and he does a presentation as well.
Any questions of staff?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. I think it's great that y'all have worked with him, and he was informed about doing the unity of titles and to make it work out, to get the script footage. So, I just want to say, good job. Let's start this year off.
Thank you.
And to be clear, there's no site plan. This is simply a zoning change.
At this time, there's no proposal. It's just a simple rezon.
Yeah, he's bringing stuff into compliance.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this item? Does the applicant wish to speak? The representative of the applicant? Otherwise, it comes back to us and we vote.
Mr. Chair, while he's coming up, this is quasi-judicial, and I would like to declare that I've spoken to no one but staff.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
As I.
As well.
Staff across the board. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. David Millage, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. McCrain did a good presentation, so this will be, I'll try to make this quick so we can all go home. So, this is a rezoning request for this property located at Prima Vista at Oroso. The property is approximately half an acre. It's currently zoned as a commercial office, and the applicant is proposing for it to be rezoned to a commercial neighborhood. Outlined in red is the subject property for this rezoning request, which is at the southwest corner of the intersection. And the north parcel is currently vacant. The south parcel has a single-family resident, which was built back in the 1960s. Since the zoning commission, as Commissioner Townsend had mentioned, these two parcels have been combined. The future land use is commercial, which is consistent with the other four or five properties at this intersection, and this future land use would remain unchanged. The proposed zoning would be commercial neighborhood, which is at the same zoning to the east of this subject property. The properties on the north side of the intersection are within the PNRD zoning district, and the properties to the south and the southeast of this property are zoned RS4. Future development of the site remains very conceptual right now. Any future development will require site plan approval. And the big reason behind this is that the trend really is away from office uses, so the applicant really wants to avail himself to the permissible uses of your ULDCs. As Mr. McCrain had mentioned, this zoning request is consistent with the rezoning standards found in your LDC, Section 11.06.03, and the applicant agrees with staff's report. So, on behalf of the applicant, I wanted to thank you for your time tonight and for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
Hope it'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Townsend, second from Mitchell. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. We'll see you when they come back through. Next item is going to be the regular agenda. This is going to come through Mr. Tipton.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item, 10A1, is a follow-up to the public hearing you just had and calls for the appointment by the Chair for a Commissioner to serve on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for a one-year term. Staff recommends that the board approve by motion an appointment made by the Chair.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the board for their interest in this item. After deliberation, I've suggested that Commissioner Townsend be appointed, if you would accept that appointment.
Yes, I'd be honored. Thank you.
And as part of that, well, it's the next item up, so it's going to be the library appointment.
If you could just vote on this one first.
Okay. So, we have my appointment for...
Motion to approve.
No, wait a minute. We got to make a motion for the Chair, for you. Do I have that right, Howard?
I made the appointment. She's accepted.
But I think we need to...
Brady made the motion.
I made the motion.
Motion by Brady.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll get there. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bart. Please call a roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bart?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Tipton.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item 10A2 is the appointment by the chair for a commissioner to serve on the Friends of the Library Board for a one-year term, and so staff recommends approval.
Thank you, and since Commissioner Townsend was on the Library Board, I would ask Commissioner Mitchell to serve, if you would accept that appointment.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
So he has accepted. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Townsend.
Second.
Second by Barts. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Next item is going to be CARES Act reimbursement dollars allocation for the public. We had a workshop here earlier today. It was pretty extensive, and Deputy Administrator Johnson is here to provide us with the background on this item.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. This is a follow-up from my informal meeting this morning. What you should have in front of you now is the highlighted draft recommendations that shows the highlighted areas that we definitely need immediate funding to keep some programs going and to address some of our existing commitments. This was sent out based on the discussion that we had in informal hearing today. Just a reminder, this is one-time dollars. These are reimbursement dollars that we receive from meeting all our CARES at requirements. So these are dollars that the board can utilize for initiatives for the county.
All right. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. You've received the document with the highlighted numbers. We've talked about the idea of coming back in 30 or 60 days. Would you like to put a number on that, 30 or 60 days? Commissioner Hutchinson, you were leading that discussion earlier.
I'm comfortable with staff making that decision because I'm not sure, there's a lot of things on here, how long it's actually going to take, so I'll leave that to staff.
Okay. Well, that being said, this is a regular hearing. Anyone wish to make a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I agree with all this except for, I think that the finance assistance for their emergency rental, because we had done so well with that, and we were leading, and that was preventing people from being homeless and being kicked out. And since this money's in place, I was comfortable with that rental program that was already out there, because I've talked to several of the organizations that are allocating that, Mustard Seed and the Homeless Association, all that. I would like to ask if staff's comfortable going ahead and putting that as a highlighted item now, too, to continue it, to keep the funding there, since we already have the money.
I think what we've understood, too, there's additional funding coming for that as well, and then...
Eighty-nine million to the state of Florida. It was just announced.
Yeah, so, so there's additional money.
Good question.
The other is, is because we're going to move forward with these, we may be able to actually move more money into that.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're talking, okay.
I just didn't, because we have been very successful, and I know that I've had conversations with Commissioners Martin and Andy River, and they're like wanting to be like us.
Aww. Any other questions?
They're actually COVID, too. They've commented on how well we're doing, so...
Very good. Comments for, any questions of staff?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mitchell to approve.
Second.
Second by Townsend. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Next item is County Attorney. This is the Municipal Services Boundary Unit Bond Resolution. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, this is, as you indicated, a proposed bond resolution for the Mura Municipal Service Benefit Unit. This is a unit that would fund the construction of potable water and fire protection improvements to the neighborhood. Approximately 60% of the property owners supported the imposition of assessments to fund this project. This is in the FPUA service area, so they will be providing service. The FPUA did contribute up to $160,000 towards this project. We've previously approved the initial assessment resolution in July of last year, and then the final assessment resolution in September of last year. The bond resolution was prepared by the county's bond council. It would be a special assessment revenue bond. There would be no taxes or other county revenues pledged. It would be supported by the special assessment on the benefited property owners. The proposed financing institution would be Center State Bank. The principal amount would be about $545,000. The final interest rate is 1.82%, a very favorable rate. This is not, as I indicated, a general obligation of the county. Staff recommends approval.
All right, any questions of staff? Hearing none.
May of approval.
We have a motion by Hutchinson, second by Barts. I just want to add, when we did go through the process of approving the MSBU, there was a question by one of the property owners, I think they own 21 parcels. Be happy to tell you that because this went forward, he was able to sell that property, and it's actually turned over twice now, and they're going to actually build some affordable housing there. So just wanted to share that with you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barts?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
As we come to the end of the agenda, Mr. Tipton, do you want to share any announcements or any additional information?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I am sure that you have seen some of the pictures of the containers that have arrived at the port for the boat hoist, for that director has ordered, that is arriving from Italy. The tires are worthy of a picture, if you would like to get a kind of a scale of just how big this thing is going to be at 90 feet high. And so anyway, it's just exciting to see that and exciting to see the construction continue and move forward.
I thought you brought a picture.
Actually, I know Peter Jones has a picture. He'll show you later. But anyway, I encourage everybody to get down there and take a look. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January 19. That's a 1:00 p.m. meeting, and that was changed to accommodate the Legislative Committee that we will be meeting with our local delegation. And then our, just as a reminder to an observance of Dr. Martin Luther King holiday, we will be closed Monday, January 18.
All right, anything else from the board? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. There you go, Franny. Thirty-five minutes.
Good.